Good evening. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council held on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024, commencing at 7:00 PM. I will call roll, starting with Council President Quittser.
Here.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
Councilmember Salah Houdin.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
We do not have any special orders of the day. We do have items from the audience. The first item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you will come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinion of the city of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A 555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition about propositions, measures, or candidates. I have, they're not numbered, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight people in person, and one person signed up remotely to speak tonight. And normally what I do is I call the first four names, so you kind of know when you're coming up. So the first is Alex Zimmerman, then Al Rosenthal, then Alan War, then Bob Yoder.
Guys, situation right now with election for 24 go very critical and very dangerous right now.
Excuse me, Mr. Zimmerman, we cannot speak of any elections, so if you could keep it to the items of the city of Redmond, that would be great.
Are you talking about, it's okay, no problem, yeah. I very appreciate you, thank you very much. So I want to explain to you situation what as I see now, it is critical, absolutely. So I want talking right now about Bellevue Council, you know what it mean, what is how only 30 minute, 10 people. And I talking about this because it's not legal, it's nine circle make many decision about this, yeah. First Amendment freedom of speech cannot be limitation, that's very important, yes, time cannot be limitation. They doing this for one particular reason, because it's a classic fascism, but it's half Bellevue right now. They support Amazon, they support another corporation. For another couple year will be 30,000 people come from Amazon to Bellevue. Is a plan for another 20 year, 200,000 people. So this very bad for everybody, and exactly very bad for Wesley Island, Kirkland, Redmond, Issaquah, Bellevue, it's bad for everybody, it's half million people, it's very serious. Is this a problem, what is I want delivery to you? This very interesting, because nobody talking about this. We accept everything like a slave, you know what it mean? They will destroy everybody. Is this a point, this critical point for everybody? And I never hear one from half million people, what is in this, this side, you know what it mean, talking stop in Bellevue machine, you know what it mean? Stop in Bellevue fascism, what is half goal, support corporation, council support corporation, and people quiet in Bellevue and everywhere. I don't understand this guy. We all lose, it's very simple, it's don't need be too smart about this. So I speak right now to you, because I want what is you wake up, we don't need too many, one, two, three people wake up can change everything, but nobody talking about this. You accept this double for rent, double for food, crime, everything, this exactly what this will be happen. This you cannot stop on this when you don't talking about this. Thank you very much for your time, doing something, stand up America, it's need be very stupid on doing this. Thanks.
Next up is Al Rosenthal, then Alan War, then Bob Yoder, then David Morton.
Thank you, Mayor Bernie, City Council. I need to play a very short piece of a video to lay a foundation for my comments.
So does the staff here at Plymouth Housing, do they let you guys do drugs in here?
Uh, they don't say no, but they don't, you know.
It's legal, it's a, this is a harm reduction place.
This is harm reduction?
Uh huh. Yeah, so they, they provide, you know, the paraphernalia, like the pipes and.
They give you the pipes downstairs?
Yeah, it's whatever, yeah.
I mean, the staff knows you guys are doing drugs in your room, right?
Right.
But nobody's intervening on your behalf, making you guys go to treatment?
Suarez says what's happening at the Lewiston Scargo is an absolute failure of the Housing First model, which essentially warehouses homeless drug addicts, no strings attached.
You don't have to be clean, you don't have to be enrolled into a program, yeah, there's no accountability, dis.
So I'm sure you already all watched the entire video, and you've seen the conditions in Plymouth Housing in Seattle. It's the same people that are going to run this project, there's no reason I think it'll be different. Plymouth Housing, there was feces on the floor in the hall, they're allowed to do fentanyl. They don't care about getting the people off drugs, they don't care about maintaining their properties, they only care about growth. As far as your reply to my email goes, city says in their email response, tenants are required to apply, be screened, and selected for approval. Sign a lease and abide by it just like anyone else. In a normal apartment lease, you're not allowed to do fentanyl, but in Plymouth Housing, you are allowed. The city says in their email response to quote, Redmond Police Chief Low, illegal things are still illegal. Chief Low, are you going to allow fentanyl to be used in Plymouth Housing, like it is in all of their other facilities? How are you going to stop it? Is it now allowed in Plymouth, but not in the rest of the city? The city says in their email response that Redmond needs 3,694 more apartments for homeless drug addicts, like the ones in the video, and another 7,025 apartments for people in as low as 0% AMI. We need another 3,694 apartments for the homeless that are drug addicted? Really? Is that what you really think, the residents of Redmond want? I was in recently, the last week, I was in the QFC parking lot over in Factoria, and I brought up the video to the.
In conclusion? Thank you. Yes. Council President?
I didn't make a point of order on this, because I'm not sure how it is interpreted with our council rules, but I will note that as part of our future discussion about items from the audience rules, I think we should look at whether, what the rules are around use of video by folks doing items from the audience. So just wanted to note that from the council, if any of you had that question during this last item.
Thank you, Council President. Next, we have, I think it's, is it Alan Nor or Alan War? I apologize. And then Bob Yoder, then David Morton, then David Haynes. Alan? Did I say Alan right? Alan? No? Bob Yoder, then David Morton, David Haynes, and Mary Beth Gitsby. D.
Hi, Mayor, Council. With three minutes, they're, they'll have to come back and again and again, but this is an incredible happening, this Plymouth Housing, more than any other event that I can possibly think of, even knocking down all the trees around group health. Basically, I think I'm beyond the council's decision, they've done it, we're going to do it. It would be nice if we could move it out to the Bellevue Crossing, where they have 12 wonderful acres, where they can have their ecosystem. But we're stuck with scattering our housing and supportive housing and homeless all over the city, unfortunately. So the council's made their decision, so it's time to move on. It's been very difficult, but it's time to move on. I wish we had a longer time like Gerald Lee wanted. So now it's in the hands and the lap of a mayor. The operational agreement is going to be really important for us to come up with oversight with the Plymouth homeless, housing people, specifically Andrea Carnes, the COO of the place, and get head-to-head, you, not necessarily the council, but you represent us, get to head-to-head, and then in a, in a study session, maybe with her, discuss all this with us. Not right away, I mean, it's four years away, but, you know. And just some ideas for, I'm more concerned about the people that are in there, okay? And my concern is, like at Plymouth Housing, there's going to be three staff that are living on site, they're going to have 24/7 telehealth urgent care, they're going to have a healthcare clinic. At our homeless hotel at the Overlake Core, we're going to have 24/7 onsite staff trained in crisis support, trauma care, and de-escalation techniques. Behavioral health services will be available on site, and there's going to be employment navigators, kudos. Plymouth Housing in Redmond, right now, all I have is the mayor and council assures us of adequate services that will be provided through a not, but it's not non-specified. I would appreciate it if you could specify some. The umbrella of Plymouth Housing is just freaks me out. There, you read what their umbrella for services is, each of Plymouth's supportive housing residents are paired with a housing case manager. Anyway, that's how I feel, thank you.
Next, we have David Morton, then David Haynes, then Mary Beth D., and then Erin Howard.
Good evening, I'm David Morton. Redmond faces a myriad of challenges and opportunities that demand focused attention from its leaders and community. Here are some key issues to prioritize. First, affordable housing. Redmond has experienced rapid growth, leading to increased housing demand and rising costs. Addressing the challenge of affordable housing ensures a diverse and inclusive community. Implementing policies that encourage affordable housing development and working with developers to create mixed income neighborhoods are crucial. Second, transportation and traffic management. As the tech industry flourishes in Redmond, traffic congestion is a concern. Sustainable and efficient transportation solutions are needed, including public transit, bike lanes, and pedestrian-friendly infrastructure. Smart traffic management systems can help alleviate congestion and improve overall mobility. Third, environmental sustainability involves adapting affordable green building practices, promoting renewable energy sources, and enhancing green spaces. It's important to focus on waste reduction and recycling initiatives to minimize Redmond's ecological footprint. Fourth, education and workforce development. Redmond is a hub for technology companies, and ensuring a well-educated workforce is essential for continued growth. Collaborating with educational institutions and investing in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math programs can help cultivate local talent and foster innovation. Fifth, community engagement and inclusivity. Building a strong sense of community requires active engagement and inclusivity. Redmond should prioritize initiatives that bring residents together, encourage diverse participation in decision-making processes, and foster a welcoming environment for all demographics. Sixth, emergency preparedness. With the increasing frequency of natural disasters and other emergencies, the city should focus on enhancing its emergency preparedness and response capabilities. This includes investing in infrastructure that can withstand disasters, implementing effective evacuation plans, and educating the community on emergency protocols. Finally, economic diversity. While the tech industry is a significant economic driver, Redmond should also strive for economic diversity. Encouraging the growth of small businesses and supporting a range of industries can enhance resilience against economic downturns and contribute to a more balanced economy. Overcoming these challenges involves collaboration between city officials, businesses, residents, and community organizations, and will ensure the well-being of its current residents and pave the way for a sustainable and thriving future. Thank you.
Next is David Haynes, then Mary Beth D., and then Erin Howard.
Thank you, David Haynes, Estera Park. I think you need to consider having the community service officers hang out 24/7 at Plymouth Housing, and be qualified enough to find a police chief and the trained crime fighters to respond to all the low-level drug pushers, and trespass them, and question them, including their junkie thieves. And I hate to bring this up, but did council ask for the statistics of how many times the 911 was called for services at Plymouth Housing Group's Belltown location at First Avenue? I ask because there's a lot of people that live a unhealthy lifestyle, and some, a lot of them are dropping dead, and going to the hospital because of self-destructive disabilities. And some of those who are live experience or are afraid of people at the window seem to let problematic people who resupply drugs. And so you got to have, like, police trained without copycatting Seattle's progressive, bottom-of-the-barrel misinterpretation of police reform, where they exempt low-level drug pushers from jail, don't train qualified and properly to question them and trespass them, to find out where they got it to shut it down, but instead, the nonprofit lead steps in and says, oh, we're going to take all these self-destructive destroyers of other people's lives and pursuits of happiness, and prioritize them for the housing on different levels to try to manipulate the skin color incarceration rates, or the priority of who's been helped, to manipulate the data. And it seems like the King County Regional Homeless Authority has only prioritized making sure they finally pay the service providers, who still haven't been held honest, forthright, and diligent in their work ethic, in the oversight of the constructive criticisms of the entire service response for homeless and housing. And I think they need new leadership, and I think, well, I'm not sure how much time I have left on this, but I think that, like, I should get a job overseeing solving the homeless crisis, and maybe try and convince council that they need legislation to convince the financial markets, like the banks, to prioritize new buildings that have robust floor plans, so that when you have kids that you're childcare caring for, they don't have to deal with like a concrete, cheap warehouse echo building on the side of the road that's trying to prop up some artificially inflated real estate for some local bank that's in the Chamber of Commerce. But what I'm concerned about is, the progressives keep paying the service providers, who are these nonprofits who donate and finance the reelection apparatus of the Progressive Democratic Party, and they water down the integrity of the oversight of the response and the nonprofits. It's like, how much money is a different entity of subcontractor going to skim off the $40 million? Because Plymouth, I'm not certain is completely qualified to build 21st century first world quality buildings, and I think it's because there's two entities skimming off of it and shortchanging the equality.
Next is Mary Beth, I think D. is your last name? I'm sorry if it's.
Uh, Fee.
It's Fee, sorry, Fee. And then Erin Howard.
What was that?
And then the person after you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, thank you for all that you guys do. I've never done this before, so have patience. So I'm here to talk about parking. I'm one of the lucky ones that has a monthly parking pass and doesn't have to move my car every two hours, for the most part anymore. Last month, my credit card expired, that was on file with the monthly parking company. So I've got to update it right away, but by the time I realized it and paid and got all straightened out, I just had one day last Friday that I had to move my car every two hours. And it's not the only, like, you could just move it a little bit, you have to move it, like, you can't even be on the same street, and these streets are very long. So it's kind of, it's really crazy from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and I'm just wondering, why was the extension from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM? And when does it, when does it stop? Let's see. And the reason I prefer the parking pass is the high cost of parking for a spot in an apartment complex that I live in and most people live in. So I pay like $2,300 base for apartment, 200 in fees, and then it would be another $200 for parking in the garage that I live at. And that's for less than a 700 square foot apartment. My son came about a month ago for a visit. He looked at a one-bedroom apartment where I live. It was 2,600 base, another $200 for fees, and about a 250 cost for his car in the parking garage. And that's for approximately 560 square foot apartment. So again, do you really need to extend the parking? Give people a break, they can't even afford, you know, a lot of people can't afford the garages in their complexes. More and more apartments are going up, more and more problems of parking. And, let's see, will, will there ever, do you guys ever intervene about capping the cost of parking in garages in apartment complexes? And will, is there regulation of the cost of apartments? Because they're just getting really crazy for smaller and smaller, smaller square feet. There's nowhere to put anything in your, in your own apartment. So that's it. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Erin Howard, and then we'll go to our online guest.
Hello, Council, Mayor, fellow community members. I'm going to talk about trees, and specifically the enforcement of our tree code. In 2022, we had a new neighbor move in in my neighborhood, and one of the first things they did was start cutting down trees. They were informed by a fellow neighbor that they indeed needed a permit for any tree that was over six inches in diameter, which the neighbor witnessed them cutting down, and they stopped, to my knowledge, that particular day. And then a few weeks went by, they did, we heard some more tree cutting, they did obtain a permit this time, specifically for three trees. That permit did not include the trees that they already cut down, and that particular day, they cut down more than the three trees that they had a permit for. We called code enforcement, but code enforcement doesn't work on the weekends or on holidays, so they were unable to be available, and they did not come out until after the trees had been removed, the stumps were ground, and guess what? If you don't have ground, if you have ground stumps, you can't measure the trees that were cut down. So, at the end of the day, at least 10 trees removed, seven of them were significant, most of them were in the backyard, and code enforcement, like I said, they did call, they did come out, but nothing could be done. In the end, my neighbors received no punishment, there were no consequences for their illegal tree cutting. The company that did come out and cut their trees was not licensed to do business in Redmond, so they did have to obtain a tree, they had to get a business license. So I'm just asking that something needs to change in this process, for people like my neighbor to be held accountable to our actual tree code. I was surprised to learn things like the video and the photos that were taken by both myself and my neighbors could not be used. There are other additional, kind of, I'm going to say, things that code enforcement cannot do, and I'm assuming it's, there are some legal reasons why the council or the city isn't able to get involved or use things like video. So I'm asking the council to consider, how can we work with code enforcement, how can we work with the city's legal team to make our code enforce, the actual tree code more enforceable, to hold people like my neighbor accountable? And then the last thing is, the trees that my neighbor is required to plant for the three that they did get a permit for, they haven't planted those yet. But I'm not hopeful, because those trees aren't protected. Even though they're required to plant them, they can plant them, nothing stops them from removing them a few months from now, a few years from now. So I'm asking to consider protecting trees that have to be planted in place of significant trees that were removed. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And next, we have Alex Brennan, online.
Hi, this is Alex.
Hi, Alex, you have three minutes to address the council.
Oh. Sorry, starting right now?
Yes, please.
All right. Well, thank you so much. My name is Alex Brennan, I'm the executive director of Futurewise. I'm here to share Futurewise's support for the quality of analysis conducted on the new mandatory inclusionary zoning proposal for Overlake. Futurewise agrees with the staff and consultant analysis that the value of the various zoning density increases and tax incentives in Overlake are at least equivalent to the increase in affordability requirements under the new program. The value comes from increases in maximum floor area ratio and building height, increases in base FAR without needing to participate in the current incentive program, stacking with the eight-year MFT program, and removal of parking minimums. Importantly, all of this increased capacity is added within heights that use lower-cost wood frame over concrete construction methods. Redmond is lucky to have implemented its current inclusionary zoning program many years ago. The existing program is now factored into land values in Overlake. This allows Redmond to take the program further with the current upzone. It is unlikely that a similar requirement would be feasible in another neighborhood or another city that does not already have inclusionary zoning. At the same time that Futurewise supports the analysis, there are other factors that council must consider. First and foremost, Redmond would benefit from a more viable fee and lieu option. This option allows developers to pay a fee that is financially equivalent to providing affordable homes on site. Only three projects have ever used the current fee and lieu option. The current fee program is unpredictable. A developer needs to go through a site-specific evaluation and approval process to determine what the fee will be. Cities with more successful fee options have a standard amount per square foot that developers can look up when first considering a project. This transparency and predictability would dramatically improve participation. A fee option gives developers more flexibility and can result in more affordable homes and more community benefits. The fee option can be used for community-based projects like Together Center, and for meeting the city's needs for 0% to 30% AMI housing. The city can set policies on where the money from fees is spent, so that this option does not lead to segregation of affordable housing in any one neighborhood. Having local funds from these fees can help Redmond compete for county, state, and federal affordable housing funding. In addition to a more viable, well-calibrated fee option, the city should also look at a larger pioneer provision to, and commit to ongoing market assessment when those provisions are used up. The real estate market is bad right now, pioneer provisions can help more projects move forward earlier in exchange for lower requirements. Thank you for considering these comments, and I look forward to continuing to work with the city and other stakeholders on these important issues.
Thank you. Items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved? Is it second? Second? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled? Seeing none, there is one ordinance to read into the record, ordinance number 3160, an ordinance of the city of Redmond, Washington, amending Redmond Municipal Code, Chapter 1506, Fire Code, in order to adopt the 2021 International Fire Code and subsequent state amendments. This is a. Oh, we'd never do this. We can just vote by acclamation rather than doing a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye? Aye. Any opposed? And motion carries 7-0, thank you very much. I'm just so rusty with that, that's unusual. The next, next up, we have a staff report, AM number 24036, Redmond's 2050 Planning Commission Recommendations for Transportation Element and Regulations. And up to the podium is Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. Tonight, as part of Redmond 2050, Planning and Community Development will introduce the Planning Commission's recommendation for updates to the transportation element, the transportation element appendices, and the transportation-related zoning code amendments. This is the third of six sets of Planning Commission recommendations that the council will receive before the end of 2024. We're almost halfway done. And the reports, together with exhibits and appendices, are provided in your pocket. Tonight, staff will summarize key components of the recommendations and ask council members where you want to focus your discussion at the study sessions that are scheduled for March 12th and for March 26th. And just as a note on the future events, on March 12th, studies, at the March 12th study session, we have invited our city transportation consultant, Farron Pierce, to attend and provide some information about impact fees. I am going to turn the microphone over to Jeff, and welcome Jeff Churchill and Josh Mueller to the podium to do the presentation this evening. and welcome Jeff Churchill and Josh Mueller to the podium to do the presentation this evening.
All right. Thank you, Director Helen, and good evening, mayor and council members. Updates to the transportation element, the transportation element appendices, and related transportation regulations are all rooted in the transportation vision for 2050. That is on this slide. The guiding principles on the left mirror Redmond 2050 themes that you've heard a lot about. Safety and technology forward are added for transportation especially. The strategies on the right were developed early in the update to the transportation element with community input, and they are an evolution of the strategies in the existing transportation master plan and serve as an organizing framework for the transportation element. We heard a lot from the community, and more than can be represented on one slide, but these were key themes that we heard on the topic of transportation over the last couple of years. Community members want multimodal access to Redmond's centers. People come to downtown Marymore and Overlake to gather with friends, to work, to learn, to recreate, and to do more. Community members also want multimodal access between neighborhoods. They would like to be able to comfortably and conveniently move around Redmond without a car. Community members want a transportation system that's built for everyone, that is cost-effective, that is not too big, and also not too small. We heard a lot about improving first and last mile connections to transit. Light rail stations are opening in Redmond next month. People are excited about that. And those who cannot conveniently access the station without a car would like another way to get there. We heard that it is important to maintain the system that we have, but also recognition the system that we have is not the system that we need in 2050, and so building new connections remains important. And we heard a desire to invest in a climate-friendly transportation system. So that input, together with drivers like Vision 2050 from the Puget Sound Regional Council and county-wide planning policies, led to the key policy updates that you see on this slide. Redmond's transportation system is aging. A lot of it has been built with new development over the last 20 years, but that will not always be new. So there is policy language that focuses on maintenance, lifecycle planning, and resilience. Regional and county-wide policy direction, together with our own community values, led us to develop a new section on equity and mobility, focused on the independent mobility, especially for those who do not drive. This is related to a focus on vulnerable users of the transportation system. And we say that, we mean those who are not in cars, people walking, rolling, biking. There are two environmental focus areas in the transportation element. One is on greenhouse gas reduction targets. Those have been incorporated from the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. And another on fleet electrification, which responds to regional policy. And finally, there is new language about connecting neighborhoods responsive to the feedback that we heard in developing these updates. I'm going to turn it over to Josh to dive into the transportation facilities plan.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'd like to introduce Appendix G, the transportation facilities plan of the transportation element. Redmond's TFP, I'll call it, refer to it in the acronym, TFP. Redmond's TFP is part of a plan-based concurrency system that meets Growth Management Act that requires cities to have a financially constrained, long-range infrastructure plan for transportation. Redmond's TFP projects are what the city anticipates being fully funded by 2050, and the networks funded are adequate to accommodate the growth that Redmond 2050 anticipates. The TFP is comprised of larger capital projects to complete the street grids and networks to accommodate for this planned growth. And as you can see within the attachment and the project list and maps, there's an emphasis around Overlake and Marymore where some of those street networks no longer, or don't exist today. The TFP includes programmatic activity improvements, including a newly adopted transportation benefit district and other ongoing programmatic activities that are funded through the city's biannual budget. It contains projects with the transportation strategy for maintaining transportation infrastructure. As Redmond grows, there will be more of this infrastructure to maintain. The TFP is also, as I mentioned, is Redmond's transportation concurrency tracking program. So in simplest terms, it's the performance measure for the city to show that transportation infrastructure is being provided commensurate with growth. Let's see, next slide. The TFP is a subset of projects that are listed under the city's transportation master plan. As these are the projects that are identified being likely fully funded by 2050, there's also included with the transportation master plan a three-year action plan and a much larger list called the build-out plan. Both of the three-year action plan and the build-out plan will be updated and adopted with the coming transportation master plan update. The current 2030 TFP was adopted in 2013. Later, there was an update in 2017 that included moving three projects from the build-out plan list to the TFP. This was due to private development coming forward with funding committed to building projects for the community. An important note I'd like to mention is projects that are included on the TFP list can be applied for with impact fee credits by developers. So they're not getting double taxed for creating a project for the community and then also paying full impact fee rates. Development of the TFP started early on with Redmond 2050's community outreach efforts and was shaped by what we heard. Many of the projects are carryovers from the current adopted TFP list. Some of the projects have been moved over from our current build-out plan as those are already committed through private development agreements for construction. Many of these projects are in Overlake. There's some in Marymore, downtown, and then along other quarters. There's also projects that are from other planning efforts and studies that align with the capital investment strategy, the CIS, and the capital investment program, the CIP. Another major change to the TFP, last year and effective as of July 1st, 2023, the City of Redmond helped sponsor Washington State Bill 5452. This authorized impact fee revenue to fund improvements for bicycle and pedestrian facilities. This was a major benefit for Redmond and all local jurisdictions across the state. Previously, only system improvement projects for vehicle-based trips were eligible for the TFP, and the funding investments collected from impact fees were only to construct those modes of transportation. As we will discuss, the TFP is not only important for Redmond's concurrency measure, it is also a basis for transportation impact fees and how they're calculated. With adoption of Senate Bill 5452, now system improvements for active modes of transportation can be included in the TFP project list and subsequently eligible for impact fee credits by developers to construct those projects. The system now will include calculations of sidewalk and bicycle facility projects to be constructed and collected by impact fees. Staff have been working with the draft TFP list and Redmond 2050's preferred alternative growth land use and our transportation demand modeling through support from our consultant to develop the following goals for an impact fee update with the adoption of a new 2050 TFP. Again, we look to update the TFP to 2050. The current 17-year 2030 TFP is getting close to completion now. We'll look to meet the GMA requirements for special uses that are exempt from impact fees, including daycares and affordable housing. We're looking to simplify the methodology and rate structure from the 2013 process, again, with a greater approach, a greater multimodal approach. And we'll look to include lower impact fees for land uses that generate higher alternative modes of transportation other than single occupancy vehicle trips. As Director Helen mentioned, for the next study session scheduled on March 12th, staff would like to invite our consultant team from Farr and Pierce, who've been working on the city's transportation demand modeling for both Redmond 2050 and the transportation master plan update, to provide more technical context for transportation impact fee calculations. We'd also like to review a proposed impact fee rate structure for consideration that includes that multimodal approach and answer any questions the council may have. Staff and our consultant will also introduce a proposal for a simplification for how the, how impact fee reductions are calculated for urban centers. The current rate table for the City of Redmond includes downtown and Overlake reductions. Now with Marymore Village and the future land use around the light rail station there would be included with that center's reduction. We are also interested to hear how the council would like to engage with our consultant team regarding transportation impact fees or any other questions that we can gather tonight out in front of the March 12th study session. So with that, I can pass back over to Jeff for some additional information on related regulation amendments.
Thanks, Josh. So we've covered the transportation element briefly, one out of the seven or eight transportation appendices, and we're going to cover a selection of the regulatory updates that are in your packet. And that'll be everything for tonight. The full list of the zoning code amendments begin on page two of the Planning Commission report, and the municipal code amendments are Attachment E in the agenda memo in your packet. I want to highlight three broad topics that are here on this slide. First is reducing or eliminating off-street parking requirements. The purpose of this is to support the viability of neighborhood businesses to advance complete neighborhood goals, to support sustainability objectives, and to support housing affordability objectives. Second, there are several code amendments related to pedestrian, bicycle, and transit facilities. These include strengthening criteria related to approving temporary sidewalk and bicycle facility closures for construction, for example, and also updating requirements for mobility management programs as part of our transportation demand management efforts. And that's really a focus on learning from how we have managed that program to date and what we can do to improve it. And third, I want to highlight a small code change that will eliminate the need for temporary use permits for cafe seating that is in the public right-of-way, streamlining the approval process for that kind of use. So today, we're interested in hearing where you would like to focus during the study sessions scheduled on March 12th and 26th. That concludes our report. We are ready to take down your interest areas for next week's study session, either tonight, or if you would like to do that by email, please by noon on Thursday so we can get it into your packet.
Well, thank you both very much. Happy to entertain questions and comments for next week so that they can be well-prepared for you. Council Vice President.
Thank you. As per usual, I will send you my list of questions, but high level, just for conversation. I'm really interested in furthering the parking conversation. We've heard a lot recently about the changes we've made, and this also will include a lot more changes, of which I read in tonight's packet. So I really kind of want us to dig into that topic. Interested in the angled parking, especially potentially along Cleveland Street. Also, really want to hear a bit more about the cafe outdoor seating and no permit option. I have concerns about ADA accessibility, making sure pathways are wide enough. Again, on the ADA topic, I want to kind of dig into some of the curb cuts and making sure that pathways are wide enough in general throughout the city, something we've heard a lot about as far as, you know, people being able to pass each other. And then some of the code updates, I will send some questions to you all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Others. Councilmember Stewart?
Sure. I don't have any additional questions to add to what's going to be already on the agenda for next week. I won't be here, so I'm going to just briefly share a comment that this was such a delight to read because at this point, one of the questions I've been asking throughout the entire Redmond 2050 process was like how we tie it all together. So it was very clear from the Planning Commission's recommendations how these materials relate to the transportation management plan and the other, all the other plans and how they're beginning to be woven together. And even what was so fascinating about the concurrent responsibilities is that we will, we will do what we have capacity to do. And if at a moment we are not producing what we thought we would produce, there's a few things that we'll evaluate to change course. So I just really appreciate that we are at this moment in the process. And since I won't have a chance to say that at the study session this week, wanted to offer my feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to say the thing I always say. I'm sure you guys are sick of hearing it. But when I, when you talk through these slides and I read this information, I actually have been reading this for many, many years. I mean, way back in 2015, these were topics of discussion. I'm hoping that when I get through the study sessions, I'm going to have a sense of how we're going to accomplish in the well-defined problems that you presented. I always say that to you, but I do mean it. The other thing I would like to know more about is the math behind, more detailed math behind the exemptions and the lowering of impact fees. What does that mean? What are we not getting? And how are we making up for it? And sort of a, you know, what does that cost us? And what, what is the benefits, I guess, of providing these exemptions and lowering fees, et cetera? So I'd like to know more about the cost-benefit math issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Slahudin?
Great. Thank you so much for presenting this tonight. Mike, I don't have any questions right now. I will definitely follow up with a few when I key in on the details. But just very appreciative, one on the focus of touching on Marymore Village specifically. I think that that will really, that neighborhood is really, you know, ripe for transportation specifically right now. And with light rail coming in, you know, it's really important to find avenues in and out there. One focus area that was not presented, but, you know, in the document, school and youth-oriented travel. I know that this is talking about, or, you know, in how I read it, and maybe I can ask some follow-up questions on this later, was on, you know, school buses and the travel to and from school. But looking at other opportunities for youth to travel in and around Redmond and even across our region, especially with metros, free youth fair, exploring opportunities for more youth engagement, engagement and opportunity, I think will be really critical for how we're building our future out.
Thank you. I have Council President and then Nueva Camina.
Thank you. I'll follow up and add my support for having a discussion around the topic of school and youth-oriented travel. One thing I've heard a couple times from the community and even from our school board is interest in the long run of thinking about how we can leverage some public transit or different types of options to be able to get kids to schools and other types of places. And it's a huge impact for those in our community. So interested to be able to dig in a little bit more on how we think about that and the Planning Commission's conversation on that. I guess, I'll echo a few things, just so you know that there's council interest in it. But I won't go too deep, since I think some of my colleagues asked a few of my questions. I will say that I'm also interested in us having a conversation around the off-street parking requirements. And really, if you all at the study session could be able to share, not only with us, but also with the public, some of the vision around the policies that we're crafting around that, the benefits we see, and the strategies that might, that would be tied to setting this vision, and some of the data behind that. I think it would be helpful to bring everyone along and for the council to be super clear about what the step we're taking in making this decision and this piece of it. I'll also say I'm very excited for the impact fee conversation, and in particular, to finally see the daycare exemption, which is a great tool to be able to address some of our childcare needs. So look forward to that. And then, and we'll note, and then I guess last question I would say is, I know we integrated into this some of the direction related to our Vision Zero resolution and commitment as a city. And it would be great to be able to have a, some understanding as you approached updating this part of our comprehensive plan and crafting this piece of how, having that now commitment impacted some of the pieces that we're seeing here in this element.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, Mr. Churchill and Mr. Mueller. So great to see you. I thank you also, Council President Kritzer, because it, what a beautiful segue. I got questions on Vision Zero and how that's going- I got questions on Vision Zero and how that's going to be integrated into that. Being a downtown resident, I see some pretty heartbreaking things that happen, so just really wanting to know how we're going to be integrating that in. And then on the zero, or on the impact fee exclusions for affordable housing and childcare, specifically on the affordable housing as we are really leaning into inclusionary zoning, then what does that mean for inclusionary zoning since it's not going to be an affordable housing development? Looking forward to our study session. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments for next week? Council Vice President?
Sorry, one more. I just wanted to take a minute and just say how exciting it was to hear you talk about Senate Bill 5452, because that idea came out of this room, and it's exciting to hear you all talk about how that is going to impact our community and impact the whole region. So just wanted to say thank you for all the work on that and really excited to see us be able to use that money for off-street, off-car impact fee improvements.
Thank you. All right. Anything else with this? Great. Well, the council looks forward to the study session next week, and as a reminder, it is virtual mostly, so thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is ombuds, no, make sure, yes, ombuds report. We have to wrap up February's Council Vice President Forsyth, and then for March is Council President Kritzer.
Thank you, yes. Still have several things I'm going to be following up on. I just got some responses today that I will be sharing out, but wrapping up February, had an email from Expression Arts, which is an arts group that serves Bellevue, Redmond, Sammamish, and learned that they give a sponsorship to the fire, Old Redmond Fire Teen House, I'm getting that backwards, but $800 a quarter to help support arts programming over there, so just wanted to give them a little thank you for that. It ends up being $2,400 annually at the teen center. We also received an email about the Firehouse Teen Center asking for support and staffing for the programming, which was timely as we're going to be entering into budget discussions from a community member that attends those programs and talking about how impactful they are for that person. And I know we are pretty much all in agreement on that, so that's great. Followed up with the person around Emerald Heights who was having parking issues around construction, hopefully getting a good resolution where the executive director over there had a meeting with all of their contractors, and hopefully they will be implementing some new programming to make sure that parking doesn't continue to be an issue over there. We had an email from Hope Link, very supportive of the cleanup work that we did on the Pride Crosswalk. I'll be following up with a community member around tree removal and some questions they had and some new codes that went into effect that will be impacting them. And then we had some follow-up around safety concerns around the Audubon Elementary School bus routes and pedestrian safety, and staff is looking into that and trying to figure out some workarounds for how to get that traffic moving better and to be safer for the community.
Council President?
We received in the last five days a couple of emails about Plymouth Housing, some questions and some opinions about it. I did have the opportunity to catch up with Director Helen to ensure that we're updating our FAQ with some additional questions and answers, just to make sure that as different questions come in from the public, we can publish one kind of central area in our FAQ so everyone has access to the same information in the public, and we can be as transparent as possible and give everyone the information they need, and I'll continue to do that and keep in touch with our staff as we get questions this month. I got a question, we got a question about Regional Aquatic Center, which has been something we've been talking about in several years, and the idea of whether it could go at Redmond Town Center or whether we could put pickleball there, and shared a little bit about our park plan, which we just adopted last November with that resident and some of the process going forward on those pieces. We also received a request for us to individually sign onto a letter around an international human rights issue. We also, I received quite a few questions and concerns about parking issues and the impacts of some of our new parking policies that went into effect in January, and I believe we heard another comment about that tonight. And I was able to meet with our deputy planning director, Seraphie Allen, and with a couple of business owners in downtown to be able to discuss the issue and what they're seeing, and to be able to brainstorm on a couple ways that some of the challenges that have come up with it might be mitigated, and our staff is following up, both in terms of some questions about the contractor that does the ticketing, as well as, you know, some of the ways that we might look at the existing policies and any unintended consequences, and that'll be something that we'll follow up on. So just wanted to let the public know that, as well as the council. And I've asked the planning staff if we can perhaps have that on a future agenda for us to be able to discuss and get an update on. I also got a request to visit Renewal Food Bank, which is a food bank that's kind of on the Redmond-Bellevue border over in, over Lake, and was really interesting to be able to see their operations, got to visit that and see the impacts of hundreds of people they serve every week. Met with some folks who had questions about our inclusionary zoning proposal and had some, there were some developers that had some ideas around how that might work, so we'll pass that along to the planning staff. I also received a question from some residents about our, the item we looked at in committee the other week around increasing police at the light rail stations, and our work with Sound Transit on that, and we'll be following up. A resident came and visited my office hours and then followed up with me about ensuring that we note about snowpack and the impacts of snowpack on climate resilience in our city as part of our comp planning process and some of the language that we have in there, so I'll be following up on that as well. And also had someone come to my office hours to talk about items from the audience and some of the rules around that, so I think that's all for me. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Are there any other ombuds items? Councilmember Fields and then Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was reminded by a resident at our last business meeting that I did not, or I failed to respond to an ombuds item back in January, so I promised her that I would, and I did, and she wrote a very detailed email to us in early January, very concerned about the exclusion of Jews from our diversity website and our proclamations. I will read just the summary paragraph from this email. Proclaiming holidays doesn't cost the city any money, and I believe in proclaiming everyone's holidays and memorials. I don't think that the city should choose whose days to commemorate and whose days not to commemorate. And in particular, her concern was that the city did not acknowledge Holocaust Remembrance Day on January 27th. And my response was, I'm not really clear on how the city decides, and that I would ask the mayor or somebody from the mayor's staff to provide that information to me, and I will forward it on to her.
And thank you. And we had responded promptly to that email from the mayor's office as well in January, so she received, she did receive a response from us.
Okay. I saw an email promising to respond, but I did not see the response, and I did check for that.
Okay. We can talk offline about that.
Okay.
And we do have a process for our proclamations that is on the website that people can read, and we try to be very thoughtful about what we do, and also we are very intentional to not go into any kind of religious holidays or things, in part because we have such a diverse community, and also there are so many holidays we would be honoring, so.
So I do want to express my appreciation. Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say that I completely agree that every jurisdiction should acknowledge Holocaust remembrance on January 27th. It's an international event. It's an international remembrance. It was a, one of human histories. We need to remember what happened. Millions of people killed, one-third of the Jewish population taken from the planet in an eight-year period. So I don't know that we did or didn't, actually didn't follow it, but I would just like to say that I think it is something that we should do as a city.
Thank you. Other ombuds items? Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I had a few visitors to my office hours. We discussed the role of permanent supportive housing and how that plays into our city's overall growth planning strategies. We talked about engagement opportunities like our boards and commissions, and I heard productive feedback on how city communications can be more proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Slahudin?
Thank you. Similarly to Council President Kritzer, I've had conversations regarding Plymouth Housing and Permanent Supportive Housing with several residents, and I was also reached out to by Renewal Food Bank and will be touring their facility in a few weeks as well.
Thank you. Any other items? All right. Next up are committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Councilmember Stewart?
Earlier this afternoon, we had the Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. We reviewed a consultant agreement for the storm water and surface water system plan. We're going to be working on this one over the next couple of years and then getting ready for not this budget cycle but the following one. We took steps in, the next step rather, in the annexation process for the Northeast 97th Street section of Rose Hill, and you can expect a public hearing to be held on that matter later in April. And finally, we prepared for a study session later this month on our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Other committee reports? Councilmember Slahudin?
Thank you. Two weeks ago, we had our Public Safety and Human Services Committee meeting where we touched on the public safety plan for the arrival of light rail, as well as our committee work plan, which we will be, there are some comments from the council regarding some amendments that we could potentially add to that work plan, so I'm going to go back to the leadership and talk through that so that we can make sure that our plan for the year is as robust as possible. Council President Kritzer and Councilmember Stewart, in their supervisor roles alongside myself in our Community Facilities District, just had the CFD meeting 2014 and 2016 prior to this, fairly light agendas. We approved a few contracts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other committee reports? Council President?
I attended the One Redmond Board Meeting. We had a special meeting on the upcoming budget. We didn't end up making any decisions but had some conversation about that budget and will likely be seeing it at the next One Redmond Board Meeting. I also attended, I served as the alternate, but I served as the voting member in this case, since Mayor Bernie wasn't able to attend the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board Meeting, and we had a really interesting meeting, in particular discussing the PSRC Regional Transportation Plan Dashboard and being able to kind of preview some of the results after that debuted about a year ago, and be able to see some of those. And I would encourage the public and also council members to be able to check out this dashboard on the website. It's really interesting in terms of kind of thinking about the context of what we're doing in our city on a regional basis, you know, how we're contributing, and then also how it's, how what we're seeing is connected to regional trends, having, you know, some pieces around, you know, vehicle emissions, zero emission vehicle registrations, commute trends, vehicle miles traveled, as well as some of the types of Vision Zero data that we look at, but at a regional level across multiple counties around, you know, serious and fatal collisions and kind of tracking those goals. So anyway, just wanted to highlight that and encourage everyone to check that out. We also discussed a regional transportation plan development process. The next update will be in 2026, so they're kind of mid-plan right now and tracking on that. And then last, we also discussed regional centers monitoring. They're coming up with a scope of work to be able to actually be able to kind of look at the regional centers work program that PSRC oversees. Obviously, we kind of fit into that in that we have our own centers within that plan that show up, so they're kind of looking at how to evaluate the success of the system of centers, consider the designation of any new centers, and then also confirm the designation of existing centers, you know, with a clear process for redesignation. So I know there have been some questions on centers before and thought I'd just flag that this was going on at the PSRC, and it looks, and I'm sure that Councilmember Stewart may have some updates from GMPB in that vein, so thanks.
Yeah, thank you for attending. I was a victim of the AT&amp;T outage and could not virtually attend the meeting, which was quite frustrating, so thank you for being able to attend. I appreciate that. Other committee meetings? Yes? Council President?
Apologies. I had one note that I wanted to make during ombuds. Would it be appropriate to make it right now?
Sure.
I just wanted to note that I usually have my office hours next, they would be next week at 3:00 PM since the first and third Friday of the month, but I won't be having those office hours that week, but I will have them the week of the 22nd if people want to attend. I'm still having them at Soul Food and would love to see you. And then I will also note, just Mayor Bernie referenced it, but for anyone who is attending our meetings, next week's meeting, council members will be attending online, since a lot of council members have different conferences and other things that will be attending outside of the city, but the chambers will still be open to the public should the public want to come watch the meeting, but we will likely not be sitting in this room, so just wanted to flag that for the public.
All right. Thank you. Any other committee meetings or any other? All right. I had two things I wanted to mention. There is actually, our ballot's out, and so you can return your ballot by next Tuesday at 8:00 PM, and we have a great drop box right out front, and we also have one at Marymore Village Community Center, or you can just pop it in the mail without a stamp as usual, so wanted to make sure the community knew that. And the other thing, just to remind people that we have two really exciting things happening. One, on April 27th, the Two Line will be opening between Redmond and Bellevue, and we'll be having a large celebration at all the different stations, so look toward, go to Sound Transit to find out all the details. Really excited about that. And then our senior in Community Center will be opening up May 3rd, if I got that correctly, on a Friday, and then we'll be having a community celebration on that Saturday, so I hope to see everyone out enjoying the beautiful facility. And if you haven't walked by recently, the landscaping is going in. It's looking all shiny and new and almost done, so really excited to have those two things. Anything else for the good of the order? All right. Seeing none, that concludes the business items for this meeting. If there's no objection, we are adjourned. Have a great night.